Today is August the 20th. I would like to call the Salina City Commission meeting to a. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Would all those that are available, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is an opportunity as a citizen's forum for anybody that's here today that would like to speak on any issue that's not on the agenda in front of us to come forward and state your name and address and relay any of your concerns or items. Those that are on the agenda, you'll have the opportunity to speak on as we get to each one of those. So do we have any citizens that would like to appear before the commission today? Seeing none, today we have no awards and proclamations. We'll move into public hearings in items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2013 Budget. Sub item 5.1A, Second Reading Ordinance Number 12-10,651, adopting the 2013 budget. Item 5.1B, Resolution Number 12-6926, adopting the Position, Classification and Salary Schedule. Item 5.1C, Resolution Number 12-6927, establishing fees for services in the comprehensive fee schedule.
This is the second reading on the budget ordinance. Mr. France, at this point in time, do you have items to discuss?
As you may recall, last week, we continued the hearing. What I have this week, instead of redoing the blue sheet, I have a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation of just about a half a dozen slides that will take us through some basics. And then we proceed with the -- any comments or the adoption. The process goals, as is normally the case, are to meet governing body objectives, to meet our financial policy targets, maintain our core municipal service levels, and stabilize operating expenses. Total expenditures 2013 for budgeted funds, the 2012 and 2013 comparison there, slight increase of about a half a percent from 12 to 13. For operating expenditures, which excludes capital, and it's pretty low to the ground, I guess, but increase of $773,000, again about a percent and a half excluding those General fund, again 2012 to 13 comparison, increase of just under $500,000. And operating expenses likewise, just a little bit over $500,000 on a $35 million base, fairly modest change. Capital improvements, street maintenance remains a focus, gas tax, about $1.4 million. Special sales tax, we've also increased this year to nearly $1.4 million. There's a wayfinding project to move down the road with that initiative. Downtown well field improvements in the water fund, raw water disinfection upgrade also in the water fund, sewer extension to Markley and Magnolia Road area. And that project is actually a carryover from some prior years. Waterline improvements, continuation of that. Wastewater plant preliminary design with construction for that scheduled probably in 2016, 2017, something in that neighborhood. And then, of course, our routine capital, we're carrying on approximately the same expenditure that we have in prior years. Personnel, again over the last couple of years, we've seen a fairly substantial reduction in staffing. There was another increment of reduction from actually in 2012 mid-year, mostly as the result of our change in operations at the Bicentennial Center. No general pay plan or cost of living adjustment for the fifth year in a row. We have some limited merit considerations proposed on the order of an average of a 2 percent allowance. Health insurance expenses are anticipated to grow. This follows actually a reduction last year. And then retirement costs are a continuing issue also. Other issues, agency contracts are still by and large at the reduced level. Public transit funding was restored to the 2011 levels. Assess value for the 2012 budget, it was $402,354,576, and that should be for the 2013 budget. It's $402,597,689, so a pretty modest change from year to year. And you see that down below in the property taxes that are levied. Total increase was $6,627. And all of that was due to new improvements. Actual values relating to base property declined slightly. Mill levy rate has stayed the same, 26.272. Typically what happens, this is based on the valuation estimate that's done mid-year. Typically what happens when you do the final November 1 valuation is a little bit higher than it was mid-year estimate. Think in the 16 or so years I've been in Salina, there's been one year where it's been lower. So like I say, typically this is kind of the worst-case scenario as far as the mill levy goes.
Commissioner, just to add to that real quick, too, you know, you'll hear people say from time to time, well, even if the mill levy stays the same, I end up paying a little more in taxes because the value of my property has increased. And in historic years, when the economy's strong, that's for the most part true. You might see, and you see broader variation, but on average, you might see anywhere from like 2 to 4 percent across the community. But in this case, and really in the last year or two, with the value of the properties across the community as a whole not growing really at all, and the mill levy staying the same, the city of Salina taxes will not be increasing the tax levy. The average, say homeowner or business owner would pay would not change. Now, that doesn't mean you just don't get variations from county appraisals throughout the community, but the average across the entire community will be no increase for the city of Salina. I think it's important for the public to understand that.
And then 2013 also includes a modest shift in taxes from the general fund to the bond and interest fund, and that was, that has been anticipated for several years, actually. There is a graph showing the mill levy by unit with the school district in blue back behind, then the Celine County in green, and the city of Salina in white. We are the three largest taxing entities. And then much lower in front of them is the library and the airport authority, and then minimal amounts for the extension district and the state of Kansas. Sales taxes, largest source of revenue for the general fund, approximately 38.8 percent of the total revenues. We have reasonably modest estimates incorporated into this budget, 3.5 percent for 2012 and 4 percent for 2013. Those reflect kind of 2012 results through the first six months. We had a really good first quarter, and it's been kind of moderating since then, but it's still looking to be on a 3.5 to 4 percent level. And we're still supplementing property tax funds to somewhat lower level in 2013. Our long-term goal for 2013 was to have that supplement down to about 400 or 450,000. We have not been able to do that, but we are moving in the right direction of that. User charges, about 16 percent of the general fund, about 45 percent of total revenues, the bulk of that, of course, being in water and wastewater. General fee adjustments, we looked at inflationary factors in some of the fees. We also took a look at what the cost of providing the service was, and then depending on the type of service, some of the considerations also included market pricing for similar services so that we stay competitive in the community. We don't want to, you know, we do things like offer space for rent. We don't want to be the lowball person in the community. It needs to be competitive. Sanitation fees are increasing by 1 percent. And then we've got a number of increases we're simply going to defer until later in the year pending either some additional results for this year. And there's a few of them where we just need some other information put together in order to establish an appropriate fee. Fund balances, some target fund balance adjustments. General fund, we're going to increase to $5 million, which brings it in the line of level of revenues in the fund. We reduced Bicentennial Center, and then we're making some changes also to sanitation and solid waste. Most funds, as they're budgeted, will achieve those target balances. The general fund will not achieve the new target, although they will surpass the old target by an increment. Golf course still looks like it's going to be somewhat short of its target this year. Today's actions is take public comments regarding the 2013 budget, then pass the ordinance and the two resolutions that go along with it. And with that, I'll stand for any questions. We can leave this slide up as a prompt, you know, so.
Any questions of staff?
On the pay plan, there's a vacant position between Grade HH Deputy City Manager and JJ the City Manager. I realize it's vacant, but what, the position being between?
There's a class, I suspect what you're talking about is there's a class there that just doesn't have a position in it.
Right.
But that probably really serves as is that just because of the grades or a certain percentage separation, it just creates the separation. I wouldn't, probably wouldn't see a position in that grade, or maybe we look at some point and Mike's having a good day, and we do some kind of study, and it shows his position should be there, so.
Good thing with my.
I don't know, but really it's just to create the separation with equal grade differences.
Gotcha. One good day. I'm sorry, you're the one good one.
What is it, one out of four?
Any other questions? Thank you. Do we have any citizens that would like to come forward and speak on matters of the budget? Okay, seeing none, close the hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
May I move to adopt on second reading ordinance 12-10651, adopting the 2013 budget?
Second.
Motion to the second to approve ordinance number 12-10651, adopting the 2013 budget on second reading. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. Carries five zero.
May I move, we pass Resolution 12-6926, adopting the position classification and salary schedule?
Second.
Motion to the second to pass Resolution Number 12-6926. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries five zero.
May I move, we pass Resolution 12-6927, establishing various fees for services in the comprehensive fee schedule?
Seven.
Motion to the second to pass Resolution Number 12-6927. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We'll move on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 13, 2012. Item 6.2, award of contract for the weather seal roof coating. Project Number 12, 2930, to S&amp;S Contracting in the amount of $15,900. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 12-6928, accepting from USD 305, the transfer of title to real estate commonly known as Hawthorne Park and Glenfer Hill Park, and authorize the mayor to execute the acceptance of warranty deed for each tract of real estate.
Well, we need items that the commissioner wishes to remove from consent agenda. Seeing none, would entertain a motion?
Mayor, at this time, I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to the second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Today we have no development business, so we move on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 12-10,650, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
This ordinance 12-10650 is passed on first reading on August 13, 2012. Since that time, there have been no comments received. Are there any questions at this point in time? Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, would entertain a motion?
I move, we approve on second reading ordinance number 12-10650.
Second.
Another motion and a second to approve ordinance 12-10650, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of the abatement of nuisances. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill, pardon me, if I may. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. Carries five zero.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 12-10,652, amending chapter five regarding alcoholic beverages pertaining to the issuance, a special event alcoholic liquor retailer's permit, clarifying the title and application of the Cermont beverage retailer's permit and the sale of Cermont beverages on licensed premises.
This ordinance number 12-10652 was passed on first reading on August 13, 2012. Since that time, there have been no comments received. We've had further work by staff and legal counsel to clarify statutory requirements for the city commission approval by ordinance for special events involving sales or consumption of alcoholic liquor on streets, alleys, roads, sidewalks, or highways. In order to ensure the city commission consideration of such requests, staff is preparing guidelines that may be applied to such special events as well as similar requests for alcoholic liquor or Cermont beverages on city-owned properties. A brief presentation on August 20, in the August 20 study session, with the intention of finalizing the ordinance and guidelines for the city commission for August 27, which would be at next week's meeting. Are there any questions on this item at this time? Do we have any public comment on this item at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
We need to just move to table this till next week? Is that what we?
Yes, Commissioner, I think. Motion to postpone until next week.
I had motion at this time to postpone the second reading until next week when staff prepares the finalized ordinance. August 27, I guess.
Second.
Motion to postpone the second reading ordinance number 12-652 until the August 27 meeting. All those in fa, well, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion to move till August 27 meeting passes five zero. At this point in time, do we have any other business to come before the commission?
Mayor, we do have someone in the audience that wouldn't like to speak on item 6.3. We weren't aware of whether there was an interest to speak prior to that being, the action taken through the consent agenda. Speaking with legal counsel, you would not have to reconsider that item just to allow the person to offer up any thoughts or comments, but only if you would want to choose or change your action.
Absolutely. Okay. So the people that would like to speak on item 6.3, if you'd come to the microphone and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Sandra Hernandez. My address is 1940 Starlight Drive.
Good afternoon.
Hi. I'm a bit, I'm at a bit of a loss because I just received information from Mr. Mike Scragg that the transfer of title from Glenfer Hill was going to be an action item on tonight's agenda. I received that information on the 17th. Why this is important to me is because I've been following the whole process of the rezoning District 305 property and the transfer of title of this particular Glenfer Hill property and the designation of Glenfer Hill Park. It is my request that the commission would table this item because I am not, I am not aware whether or not everything has been taken into account. This process began back in 1994, and I know that they have been working very hard to do the transfer of title, but there seems to be a, it's not clarified, the actual property that was Glenfer Hill Park leased to the city versus the Glenfer Hill survey property that belongs to District 305. And I apologize if that's confusing. But I'm asking that the decision not be made tonight because in working with them, the specific outline for the land seems to have changed since a recent survey was done, but this whole process began back in 1994. And now if there's been a new survey, would there not have to be public records to the fact that they ordered a new survey?
The pieces of property, or piece of property that we're talking about, would you go ahead and elaborate on the two that she had addressed, which sounds like the deed and title of the school property versus a leased park property?
I'll try to answer a general part of that, and then I'm going to flip the hard part over to Greg.
What was he for?
Generally speaking, we, this, both properties that are, that you took action on were properties that have been maintained by the city but owned by the school district through prior arrangements. And so the idea of taking them into ownership by the city is a housekeeping item. And in fact, once you take ownership of what would be park, what were and will be park properties, you may be aware of some conversations quite some time ago that once it's a park property, for you to change the use to something else, there's a formal process to do that. It's not just as easy as taking an action. And there's a public input process, protest process, I believe, associated with that. So by taking ownership, in essence, you provide more protection to keep that property a park property than you might otherwise have. Now, what it sounds like, and I haven't had a chance to speak with Mrs. Hernandez specifically about this particular question, is on the Glenfer Hills, it sounds like there's a question as to really what the boundary of the park is or was associated with what was actually or what is being transferred by the school to the city. And that's where I'd have to transition over to Greg regarding the legal description and that information.
Thank you. The, one important thing to keep in mind is, you probably gathered from the item, we are in this action merely accepting the deed for the property from USD 305. In other words, they have executed and delivered the deed as is customary prior to recording it. It is formally presented to the governing body and either accepted or not for recording. The survey question, what is shown on the aerial and what is described on the deed is as the property was surveyed by Mr. Hardy, and I'm sorry, Mr. Andrew, you have a copy of that survey with you?
Yes, I do.
I don't. That was prepared, it has not been recorded, just as a matter of, right, wanting to be sure that we not have a recorded survey that is in any way consistent with the transfer of the property. So what we were anticipating was that the survey indeed would be recorded simultaneously so that they obviously are consistent. There was consideration in earlier discussions with USD 305 of what was the best line of demarcation, if you will, between what would become the city park property ultimately and what would remain the property of USD 305. There was some discussion over that period of time that this whole matter has been under consideration, that ran closer, if you will, to the, to the slope or the drive. You have a mental picture of the configuration there, or you can look at it on the aerial and see how the paved, or the drive and the paved portion tapers there to the east on the northern end. Discussions with USD 305, between USD 305 and city staff led to the conclusion that the most logical line, if you will, was the existing lot line. That is what is reflected there. Now, that has been modified to a certain extent there on the south end, as you can see, that angle is there as the aerial would show you in order to leave that drive from the parking, from the USD 305 parking lot to Gypsum Avenue in the ownership of USD 305. But that is the only deviation from the platted lot. That was thought to be, as I would understand it, the most logical line between, between the two properties. The, and I understand possibly that is Mrs. Hernandez's concern as to whether, trying to, but words in your mouth, but want to, if I'm understanding the question or the concern, is it, is it that it has to do with whether that is the, in your mind, the most correct dividing line between the two properties?
Yes and no. The no would be when they were deciding to make that a planned development district, and it had to do with allowing District 305 to put their administration building up there, would there not have been a survey to delineate between what would be park property leased by the city versus what would remain in District 305's hands associated with the administration building?
I don't believe so. I might, if I may, look to Mr. Andrew. Ordinarily, that PDD encompassed that full set of lots, so I, there would not have been an event, in my understanding, that would have precipitated a survey.
Okay, then, in addressing you, Mr. Bayston, we've discussed Glenfer Hill for some time, and it had to do with the, you know, the locating of the leases, et cetera, but specifically, what, what land was designated to be leased? What plot of land was designated to be leased by the city that was considered park property? And like I said, I do apologize to the city commission because I have been tracking this and being a part of it and being involved in it since June, and I did not know this was on your agenda tonight until I received an email from Mr. Scragg on Friday, and I have been in contact. And I have been in contact with him every month, sometimes twice a month, because I am following this very closely.
What's the underlying?
Yeah, I guess.
I think that's probably the five are wondering, what's the real concern that 305 is actually trying to give the city too much property for its park or not enough? Or, I'm hoping to understand.
Okay, the question is, the process of the separation, and it goes back even to, I think, 2004, and this I've had conversations with Attorney Bankston. It was years ago that a designated portion of the land was going through the transfer process into the city's hands, years ago. And Mr. Bankston informed me that it was just a matter of him finalizing it, that the city had already, the school district had already decided that that portion of land was going to be transferred. And this is based on discussions with Mr. Kennedy as well as Mr. Bankston. My question is, and it is why I want to table this, I would like to know, are they shrinking the area? Why is the hillside now a part of not being considered as a part of the park? Does that make better sense?
Yeah, I can just try and guess that that's kind of what Mr. Bankston said is that it just makes for a more perfect square property line. And also, I mean, I can't see that there's a little slope there, but my thoughts along, just looking at the aerial photo, was perhaps if they ever needed to extend the parking lot, having that extra ground there might be useful, but maybe if there's a slope there, it might be costly, but that was just my thought, is just to square it up. But I think to keep mentioning that they had something in mind a few years ago, none of that's really relevant in the sense that I can decide that I'm going to give Commissioner Shirley some property, and 10 years from now, I can finalize it with her. And that, what I kind of mentioned before, I might say, I'll give you this general area when we make the finalization and we draw the lines, what we discussed 10 years ago may not necessarily be relevant. It's kind of whatever is legally presented to us now. So the fact that we, they may have discussed the lease, may have included that corner, I guess in my opinion is what they presented with us today is what we're accepting, and I don't really see where tabling or holding off is going to make a difference to that. I mean, are you wanting us to go to USD 305 and ask them to give us more land? Or, I mean, I guess direction would help.
Right. It was in my impression that the decision of the land that they were going to be given to District 3, I mean, given to the city, I apologize, that was already decided, and Mr. Bankston had to finalize the city side of it, not District 305's side of it. And now that we've gone through this whole process back since June and the rezoning process, the land is now being surveyed, and that's why I asked if it had been surveyed previously, to know what was being maintained by the city versus what was being maintained by District 305. Because whatever is being maintained by the city, that would have been designated park property. So.
Yeah, but I think what we heard from staff was that when the lease was initiated, which I would think a survey would be not something typical of a lease situation. But when the lease situation came about for us to take care of the park, it was this much land, and I would venture to guess that probably didn't go along these purple lines and then take care of everything inside. I'm just guessing, but I would think that they probably went up to concrete proper and took care of part of what was 305 land and part of what was the parks land. I want to re-ask the question on the survey, on the definition of this lot. If I heard you, right, Mr. Bankston, the, what I would call the southeast corner of this property, if I would take that purple line and extend it straight down to Gypsum, then that forms consistent piece of property with what was previously established as that lot? And the survey kind of redefined to get the driveway back towards the building?
That's correct, Mayor. And again, Mr. Andrew, I may want to speak to the technical aspects of this from a subdivision lot standpoint. But, and I do want to revisit a couple of points, if I may, about the whole situation. But the survey, and again, Mr. Andrew can speak to this better than I, but the survey generally serves to define that tract in a way that while it ties to the lot line, it is still a modification of that lot that is addressed in the form of the survey. And again, Dean, you may want to make sure that I'm not misstating the technical terminology from a court standpoint.
Pointing fingers of where that line came from. It came from my suggestion because the legal description of the Glenifer Hill campus, it comprises the west 233 feet of Lot 21, which is what you see over on the east-hand side. And it also includes the east 186 feet of Lot 22. So what the deed and survey depicts there is the line, that is the boundary line between Lot 22 and Lot 21, and the property division line there simply follows that platted lot line. Because by doing that, that avoided any replotting or any other kind of surveying issues, it was a clean transaction. Just by way of background, at one time, back in 1994, USD 305 offices were actually in this building down that hall over there. And after Glenifer Hill Elementary closed, they looked at relocating over there, and because it was no longer a school function and offices weren't allowed in a residential district, they did it as a planned development district. And the planned development encompassed the entire property in 1994. It was not until 1996 that the city approached USD 305 and essentially purchased the playground equipment there on what is defined as the lower playground, which is basically the flat portion that's down the slope of the hill. There was no survey that was done at that time in 1996 to define that area. It was defined as the lower playground, which essentially means the flat portion of the playground down from the slope. And so the line that's on the survey and what you see today, it's not based on topography or anything else, it's based on the existing platting arrangement there so that the common lot line between Lot 21 and 22 becomes the division line there. But at the time that the planning commission, city commission, reviewed the planned development district in 1994, that was not a park. It was simply a playground area that was part of the school site, and it wasn't until two years later that the city approached the school district about using that as a neighborhood park. And the other thing that Mr. Gage mentioned is important, that even the action of accepting this ownership doesn't make it a park, it makes it city property. It is not the same as the statutory definition of a park. This is simply making it city-owned property, and then you can decide that you want to develop it as a neighborhood park.
So, Dean, if I may, the reference to the lower park is, how was it referred to in the lease that we have of the school district?
Playground area.
So there was no?
There was no survey that was done that delineated where that was. And the first time it was actually formally delineated was when Mr. Harvey went out and surveyed the ground. There was no survey done when the lease was done originally. But we, the city, actually purchased some of the slide swing sets, those things that were down in that lower area.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but not only was there not a survey done, there was no more specific description?
No, there was no description. The planned development district was not changed in any way. It was west 233 feet of Lot 21 and the east 186 feet of Lot 22. And this divides it where Lot 21 and Lot 22 meet. That's what Mr. Bankston is referring to in terms of following the platted lot line.
Two quick points, if I may, Mayor, two quick points. Mrs. Hernandez refers to an earlier conversation we had, and that was certainly the case. We had had an indication for some time that the district was interested in, had, I guess you would say, tentatively authorized the concept of making the transfer. What I may not have explained in that initial conversation was that one of the questions was the area to be transferred. That has been one of the points of discussion, is what was the best and most correct footprint of the area to be transferred. So that was one of those. It had been surveyed, I think, along this lot line, I think, looking quickly to refresh my recollection, this, yeah, this survey that shows it following the lot line goes back to '08. So that has been one of the options for some time, and there have been a host of other discussions related to this matter that I want for you all with, but it has been under consideration for a period of time. And I may very well be responsible for your not having been notified of tonight's acceptance of the transfer, and that was, as you might imagine, staff has been working closely with USD 305 on both of these transfers. And in talking with Mr. Kennedy about, well, in checking with him how their meeting went when they authorized the transfer here just, what, within a week or so ago, in that conversation, he had mentioned that you were present and that you seemed pleased with the outcome, and I think we thought everything was good and we had met what were the public's interest and yours in particular. And I certainly had not alerted the others on staff that we needed to specifically notify you of the acceptance this evening, and that's, I'll take responsibility for that.
Well, I feel compelled to not let him take responsibility for that. In addition to the work that Greg was doing, Mrs. Hernandez and I had ongoing conversations. In fact, three weeks to a month ago, I think, we identified today's date as the likely date that the commission would consider it. And addition to this information that I provided her, I also provided the planning commission information relating to the zoning of the school properties. The planning commission packet went out on Friday. So in the interest of combining all that information, I emailed it to her when the packet was complete Friday. Staff was not aware of the concerns that Mrs. Hernandez had till just short of before the meeting. I had an opportunity to speak with her just briefly, but the topic we discussed was different than the question that she's now raised, or at least my understanding of it was. So there may be additional information that she has and has questions about that I'd be happy to speak with her about, but I'm not sure that I fully understand the issue or her concern as we discuss it before the meeting at the moment.
Commissioners, I think when you look at the action, the school could say, well, we just want you to have the south part of, the active part of the property where the playground equipment is. They wouldn't have to give us north park, but they chose to, they chose to basically follow, as Greg mentioned, the current lot that's there with the exception of the corner on the southeast area, just to ensure that they have driveway access to their office. So if you're going to draw this from scratch, this is how you would draw it. And it's nice because the way it was plotted makes sense. Personally, if we by chance happen to be mowing on the northern portion a little over onto the hill and helping them out, we don't have to do that anymore. That's not such a bad thing for us. I'm not sure if we actually were mowing that area or not, but it's a good possibility we probably did, just because we were out there mowing the essence of the field. So that's okay to give that back away. So I wouldn't recommend any changes in the dimension of that. There certainly aren't any past legal aspects to it that would constitute a reason to do that. So it's just practically where you want the lines to be. If you don't like where these lines are, you could reconsider it and change them, but if you're happy with it, I think you're good.
Well, we could reconsider it. The school would have to decide they want to give it to us.
Well, yeah, but as far as unlocking your current action, you'd have to do that, and then certainly you'd negotiate with the school.
I guess I would just want to ask you again, kind of, just so we can clarify what the concern is. You know, I mean, I know you've mentioned this, but I guess I'm not, maybe you guys have captured something and I'm, as usual, dense, but I guess I'm just not, we're basically accepting the land they gave us, no more, no less. Anything they discussed prior to this, if it was 10 years ago, a year ago, six days ago, when the survey was done and they said, hey, this is what we're giving you, we're just accepting that. Are you saying, I guess I'm trying to understand, your, I presume dissatisfaction with what we've got here, or were you hoping we were getting more land or less land, or?
The area that has been considered Glenifer Hill Park and maintained by the city included that hill.
I see.
Okay? And that hill's a big part of that park because that's where kids, you know, and that neighborhood would go in flood.
Sure.
Now, that might not be a problem in working out something like that with District 305, but in the discussion that I had earlier today with Mr. Kennedy, he was not aware of prior meetings from 1994, 1996, because he wasn't obviously in the same position he's in now.
Sure.
And if any of the work that was done there was in contrast to what's being done now from him, that would be something that he would have consideration for. Now, in addressing what was said about, I was definitely at the Board of Education meeting, and Mr. Kennedy came up to me at that meeting and prior to the meeting starting, saying that this is just a formality, we're just going to approve it, you know, we're going to accept it the way it is, there's no discussion on it. I stayed for the meeting, and there obviously wasn't any discussion because I would have had to fill out a form. So I was really stopped. I didn't receive at the time this information that is being presented right now, even though I've been following it quite closely.
Sure.
So.
So, I mean, I just want to be, so you were kind of hoping that that hill part would stay as part of the park and kind of follow the green lot line or something?
That is correct.
I understand. Okay, that's kind of more where I was coming from, and I guarantee that's probably what you want.
The park area remaining the park area.
My thoughts are purely is, again, it makes for nice lot lines, which we like in city planning. It also allows, like I said, if they ever needed, I don't know what the USD 305 use for Glenifer Hill is or what their plans are, but if they ever need to expand the parking lot, that would be the only land that they could use secretly. My thoughts would be that kids will still continue to sled down that and use that area, and more than likely, USD 305 won't say anything, and no one will know any different. I think Mr. Kennedy was probably right, it's more of a formality, but I, there's an imaginary line there that I don't think kids will see, they'll continue to play on both of those areas, I would guess.
Until 305 decides to expand into that area for a wider driveway, parking lot, whatever.
Which they could, and is probably in all honesty and their best interest, because if we were to take that land and all of a sudden they needed that expanded parking lot, more than likely, the city would be giving it back, or they'd be condemning that house to the east, or, you know, it's just, this probably does seem to make the most sense. I appreciate your interest in wanting to keep the hill and think about public parks and things like that, but this does seem to make the most logical sense from their standpoint, and we're just basically accepting what they're giving us. And I mean, I think to go back and ask them to remodify is somewhat ungrateful, I mean, I guess in a way, I mean, maybe.
What I'd suggest, as you go ahead and keep your action on this property, there's nothing that would stop the school, if they would like to, from taking the lot that they're currently located on and surveying off, splitting off that hill area if they should want to, and you could accept that later.
Sure, if they find it.
So if they're still interested in that, if it was an oversight, they can still do that. If it's not, you're subject to what they'd like to give you anyway, so it doesn't change anything.
Is this, has it gone through the process where this is an official city park? Or is this a lot within the planned development district?
Well, I'm not sure that you have a formal process of declaring a city park. I'd refer to Dean or Greg on if you have to do that or if it's simply by the use of the property, but in this case, you haven't declared it as anything, but there's a presumption that you would use at least existing part as a city park in accordance with past history.
Right. Well, my question to that effect was if we don't accept this piece of land, can they use it to put another building on?
I think they could use it for whatever their zoning would allow, which if it would allow another building that complements what they're doing, in any legal zone where they are, in any of the properties, they certainly could, including this property. And so that's what I was alluding to, is that whether it's formal certification of this eventually as a city property, as a city park, if you own it, or whether it be the activity of a park in essence causes it to be considered a park for that purpose. If, I guess the short answer is, is if folks want it to be a park for long term, the best odds of keeping it a park are to have it with the city than with the school.
And it protects them from selling to even a private company and, you know, rezoning it potentially, rather than even that small. it potentially, rather than even that small park being a park, it could be houses or...
That's a very good location for a housing development.
Yep. So in a way, giving it to us at least puts a little extra buffer between privatization and at least allows potential for a park. Seems like an odd place to a park next to one of our biggest parks, but...
Yeah, but I agree with you. I think it very well...
But we'll take it. We'll take it.
It is designated what is a neighborhood park, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, I hope this is helpful. Certainly, it's listed as a neighborhood park. I know in one of our conversations, Mrs. Hernandez and I looked at, each of these are designated as neighborhood parks, Hawthorne, Glenifer Hill, Kennedy, even, I think the significance from a legal standpoint is, as you all might recall, we do have a situation that if the city owns property and it's been utilized for park purposes, there is a specific statutory process that the city must go through before it can sell that property to anyone for any other use. Under these leases, I would say that while they are designated, whether neighborhood park or otherwise, that statutory requirement, correct me again if I'm wrong, Mr. Andrew, but I don't believe that that statutory requirement attaches until the property is owned by the city. Is that fair to say? So that in USD 305 ownership, and now we are subject to the year-to-year carryover lease that they would have to abide by, but if that lease terminated and they said, thank you, we prefer that you not use it as a park any longer, it would no longer be used as a park without ramification. In city ownership, once it is used as a park, I think that has the practical effect of it being so designated, and the city would be subject to the statutory requirements related to doing anything else with park property.
Sure. And is that our intention, is to use it as a park?
I think at this stage, yeah, unless, unless as a commission you would like to use it some other way, the intention was basically to continue to use it the way it was used before as a park.
So at this point in time, is there anything else that you would like to say before the commission?
I would just like to thank you for giving me this time, and I apologize that I took up this time.
No, that's great.
This was my opportunity.
A short meeting could help.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any action that any commissioner would like to take to undo action previously taken on this item?
No, I think at this point, it's probably the best action, like Mr. Gage said, if the school system wants to deal with some more parks, we'll take it.
Certainly, we can inquire if they're interested in giving us the rest of that. We can see what needs to happen to make sure it occurs, if that's something you're fine with.
Yes.
If I may quickly, Mayor, I would hope I can speak for staff and all concerned that have been involved in this process. Mrs. Hernandez certainly has no need to apologize, I don't think, from anyone's standpoint. If anyone could go to school, so to speak, on how to carefully and dutifully become involved and participate in governmental processes, they would do well to learn from Mrs. Hernandez how to do that, because she has been very diligent in her efforts in this whole process.
So I might apply, no motion or request for further action on this issue. I'll ask again if there's any other business to come before the commission. Seeing that I'd entertain a final motion.
We adjourn.
Motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We adjourn. Thank you.